Good afternoon. Welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence your cellphones. If you're appearing today, please come forward, introduce yourself, spell your name, and also your client. And if you're testifying on any matter on the agenda, please come forward, be sworn in by Ms. Hori, identify yourself, and spell your name for the commission's reporter. With that being said, Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the 19th and 20th meetings, and the regular minutes of the 21st meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive minutes of the 19th meeting and the 20th meeting, and the regular minutes of the 21st meeting are approved. Moving into preliminary hearing, Agenda Item Number One, Transfer Application Number 19-15829 from Koro Raku USA Inc., Mr. Lu.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. To my right is the President, Ms. Usuki, Y-O-S-U-K-I, H-I-D-A-K-A. He is present with Counsel Wayne Lu. Just one change to the investigator reports, he did get fingerprinted today.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Commissioners?
Okay. Motion to approve transfer application number 19-15829.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number One, Transfer Application Number 19-15829 is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Two, Application Number 19-14808 from FEC Kamaki Partners, DBA Champ's Hawaii Sports Bar and Restaurant, Mr. Keuch.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. Keith Keuch for the applicant. To my right is April Widing, W-H-I-T-I-N-G, Haraguchi, H-A-R-A-G-U-C-H-I. We've read the investigator's report. I have a couple of issues with it, and if I may, I will start out with addressing a couple of the issues.
Please.
First of all, as to the percentage of sales, the food sales. As this commission knows, because this licensee has appeared in front of the commission, the licensee is trying to rectify that. Give to Mr. Hori the latest. This is the POS run, point-of-sale system run for November and December, which will show you what their food sale percentages are for the first time really since they've been open. They're now over 30 percent. They're 32.2 percent. We anticipate that this will get better, and to be perfectly honest with you, the reason why it's so high is because now they're doing all of the catering for the King's Lululeu at Waikiki Aquarium. But, and this is before they even rolled out, officially rolled out the menu. They still have sales on the menu, but you can see a large part of their sales are the catering. But right now, they're above the 30 percent. They're 32.2, and we expect that to get better. The investigator's historical data is correct, but as the commissioner, my client, has had some issues with the kitchen, installing the kitchen, I think it's made a difference. You can see this from the report, they now have a chef running the kitchen. The second point I would make is there are seven noise complaints raised by the investigator, but only one was substantiated. I respectfully disagree that the containment is poor. I think it's average. This is not a wooden building. This is basically a CMU type of construction with almost a stucco exterior. It's difficult to listen, to hear from the outside, but I've reminded my client that to be mindful in any event of any noise on the outside, and should they be granted the license, monitor that.
Okay. So before I ask for questions, have you furnished licensing supervisory with this document?
No, I will. I've got a copy for you.
You have a copy for him?
Yeah.
Yes, I would like him to opine on that. And with that being said, Commissioners, do you have questions for the applicant?
Mr. Keuch, thank you for bringing this report. Are you able to determine, or is your client able to determine, what percentage of the food sales are attributed to the catering as opposed to the sales within the establishment?
I, you know, if you look at this and eyeball it, it's really about 19 percent of the catering you see because it's a total of the hole. So it's about 13 percent from the establishment. But if you look at the numbers, and I pointed this out to my client, the entree numbers are very low. It's like 1.1 percent, and the appetizer numbers are relatively low, it's 7.4 percent. The total number of the hole is the same for both. So you can easily extrapolate it by saying, okay, if you are 32.2 percent food, most of the catering, not all of the catering, but most of the catering is going to be food. They do cater, obviously, because they provide alcohol there, but a large part of their catering is food.
I was going to ask, where's the catering at, but I see it now. Thank you.
Yeah. But that's probably the easiest way to do it. At the public hearing, we'll try to extract that, if that's something you want.
No, no, it's right here in this report, so it'll be useful if we have an updated report.
Yeah, we'll get you an updated report at the public hearing if we pass through.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the Commission?
Mr. Keuch, what about page two?
You may ask through the ownership?
Yeah.
April is the owner. Glenn is her husband. Yeah, they're both down there because they're husband and wife. I don't know what else to tell you beyond that. I mean, that's going to be the nature of how it is. I mean, I can certainly tell them to go down their class, but it's kind of how they've done it since it's been open, so we're not hiding anything. It is what it is, you know? Glenn has to be more vocal than April does, but, you know, maybe she can be more vocal too, so.
At the end of the day, we have to rely on representations and submissions to not only the commission, but business registration, so.
Yeah, and they have a manager. They're not physically down there, to be perfectly honest, neither one of them. They went through, they fired the manager that they had, I think several months ago, for various different reasons, so they have a new manager there. When we interface, we actually interface with the manager, because they're there and they see things, so to be honest, that's kind of what we do. April gets me the data, because she got me this data, and I try not to talk to Glenn about it, because it's not his business.
This is the Liquor Commission, not a family court, Mr. Keuch.
I understand that.
For another venue.
I understand that.
Thank you. I'd just like to say one thing, you know, Mr. Keuch. The gross, the food sales and the liquor, those are minimums.
I understand.
You know what I mean?
I understand.
We don't want to see people scrambling to make the minimum. We want to see an established serving alcohol and food to complement.
I agree, and one of the things they've done is they've got a chef in that actually has some type of reputation to do the menu. The hardest, the biggest challenge they have is going from what they did, because the sales, food sales, were what they were, a low number, and trying to transform that to what they're doing, but that's certainly their full intent, so.
And we did get a new kitchen?
Yes, we did.
We did, and it's up, been approved by the Department of Health?
Yes.
Everything, so that was always an issue with this commission.
And they're throwing komokega out of there, so.
Okay. With that being said, Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We're now in the executive session. We are now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Motion to approve application number 19-14808 with three conditions. One is we will need licensees to provide updated numbers by public hearing, so the same type of report, yeah, Mr. Keuch, to provide it. The second would be a business plan that contemplates no catering, and the third condition would be a copy of the menu.
Okay. All of that makes sense.
I second the motion.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Two, Application Number 19-14808 is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck. Agenda Item Number Three, Application Number 20-20557 from Karai LLC.
My name is Garrett Kamie, Managing Member of Karai LLC. Last name is spelled K-A-M-E-I.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number 20-20557.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Three, Application Number 20-20557 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Agenda Item Number Four, Application Number 20-20677 from Foodland Supermarket. Mr. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. Ms. Hori, Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Foodland Supermarket Limited. Present to my right, Mr. Paul Yasukuchi. He is a Director of Operations. First name, P-A-U-L, last name, Y-A-S-U-K-O-C-H-I. At this time, we have no changes to the investigator's report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Motion to approve application number 20-20677.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Four, Application Number 20-20677 is approved.
Thank you so much.
License application, temporary license application, Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number 20-20, 20-21208 from Coromo LLC. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission. Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of Coromo LLC. To my right is Thomas Jones, Member and Manager. We have no changes to this investigative report.
Very good. Commissioner?
Okay. Motion to approve application number 20-21208.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Four, Application Number 20-20677 is approved. I'm sorry. Let's go back. Can we strike that, please? Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number 20-21208 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Been a long day. Calling Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number 20-21116 from Wangja Corporation. Mr. Keuch.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. Keith Keuch for the applicant. To my right is Misun, M-I, separate name, S-O-N, Furukawa, F-U-R-U-K-W-A. She's the proposed new Officer Director and Shareholder of the corporation. We have no additions or corrections to the investigator's report, and anticipate Chair O'Donnell's questions. We have all of the records. In fact, the seller was my client, the buyer is my client.
Two for one, Mr. Keuch, huh?
Not, doesn't quite work that way.
Good business is good, huh? Double billing. Very good. Commissioner?
Mr. Keuch, does your client have experience managing a hostess license?
Yes, she used to own K Style over on in Kalihii, and she managed Aqua Lounge under a services agreement. So she's been in the bar business for quite a while.
Fortunately or unfortunately, she has appeared many times before this commission.
Yes, yes.
Please make sure that she understands the rules of that category and class of license.
She does, and she'll monitor.
Thank you.
Motion to approve stock transfer application number 20-21116.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number 20-21116 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Moving into other business, Agenda Item Number Seven, Request Number 20-21240 from Wayne Lu Esquire, on behalf of Tanaka Holding Hawaii.
Yes, the record Wayne, Wayne Lu has the request there. This premise just closed this past July. He did not renew his license. This is one of the many Agus giving up all their licenses.
Okay. Commissioner?
Okay. Motion to approve request number 20-21240.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Seven, Request Number 20-21240 is approved. Very good.
Motion for the adoption of decision and order for Agenda Items Eight through fifteen inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision and order, Agenda Items Number Eight through fifteen inclusive are approved. Moving into adjudications.
Good afternoon. Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel, appearing as a liquor prosecutor for today's adjudication matters.
Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Ashley's Restaurant and Lounge. Mr. Lu.
May the prickly flick, Wayne Lu is appearing for this licensee at this hearing.
But she seems too busy to appear?
No, she had, you can see, this occurred in 2018. The place has since changed owners since then, and the attorney for the new owners. So we, we enter a plea, we're reading all charges, enter a plea of no contest, and just not much we can say as to what happened.
Is that a no contest plea for charges one and two?
Yes, and we're reading all charges.
Thank you. Motion to accept the no contest plea for charges one and two.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Charges One and Two, the no contest pleas are accepted.
Yes, Neely, what are your recommendations?
For charge one, this was a second violation of an unregistered employee. I recommend a fine of $500.
And for charge two?
For charge two, this was a second violation of an employee consuming liquor while on duty. I recommend a fine of $1,000.
Mr. Lu, any comment?
No. We're not allowing any comments.
Motion to approve the recommended fines of $500 for charge one and $1,000 for charge two, for a total of $1,500.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Charges One and Two, recommended fines of 500 and $1,000, for a total of 1,500 are approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Chris's Liquor and Grocery. Mr. Lu.
Yes, I've informed Call Counsel that we're going to enter a plea of acuity in this particular matter.
Okay, we'll move that to the end of the.
Do you want to prepare today?
I would like to request a continuance in order to supplement this.
I'm sorry, when would you like to continue, Mr. Lu?
We've agreed to continue to February 20th.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay. Motion to continue Agenda Item Seventeen, Chris's Liquor and Grocery, for a contested hearing on February 20th, 2020.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Seventeen is continued to February 20th, 2020. 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Club Spotlight.
Good afternoon, Chair and the Members of the Commission. My name is David Sir, Counsel for the licensee, L-C-A, Inc., DBA Club Spotlight, and present with me is Tammy Song, the President and Shareholder of the licensee. We waive the reading of the charge.
How would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
This is a first violation of an employee drinking liquor while on duty. I recommend a fine of $500.
Mr. Song.
There's no explanation for that, and the rules are being enforced by the owner at this point.
And is the employee in question still employed there?
Yes.
Okay, but she's been informed and retrained?
Yes.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $500.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, the recommended fine of $500 is approved. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Club Thai Angel.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Arnold Green, representative of Financial Partners Doing Business, Thai Angel. To my right is Thapana Thong Moon, spelled T-H-A-P-A-N-A-N. Last name is Thong Moon, T-H-O-N-G-M-O-O-N, and waive the reading of the charges and with the no contest.
Is that a no contest plea for both charges, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charges one and two.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Charges One and Two, the no contest pleas are accepted.
Ms. Neely, charge one is a first violation of lap dancing. I recommend a fine of $500. And for charge two, this is a first violation of a non-hostess employee sitting with a customer. I recommend a fine of $500.
Mr. Green, this involves the same individual. Are they still employed at this establishment?
Yep.
Okay, and what happened?
Apparently, her host card, hostess card, had expired. She was carrying a card registered at the commission, but her hostess card had expired, and why she let it outside?
And has she been trained or retrained to be, to know that lap dancing is not allowed on the premises?
Yes, she's worked for a long time in a hostess bar. She never left.
Commissioner, any questions? Motion to approve the recommended fines of $500 for charge one and $500 for charge two, for a total of $1,000.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Charge Number One and Charge Number Two, recommended fines of $500 each, for a total of $1,000. All approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty, The District Power.
This licensee has signed a stipulation to plead no contest and waive appearance.
Motion to accept the no contest plea and waive of appearance.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation for an unregistered employee. I recommend a fine of $350.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $350.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty, the recommended fine of $350 is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, Kona Brewing Company. Mr. Lu.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Members of the Commission, Terry Lee, Counsel for the licensee, waive reading of the charges and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charges one and two.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, Charge Number One and Charge Number Two, the no contest pleas are accepted.
Charge one is a first violation of failure to notify the commission of changing managers within 30 days. I recommend a fine of $500. Charge two is failure to apply for commission approval prior to date of conversion. That's a first violation. I recommend a fine of $500.
Mr. Lee?
No objection.
Motion to approve the recommended fines of $500 for charges one and two, for a total of $1,000.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, Charge Number One and Charge Number Two, $500 each, for a total of $1,000 are approved.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two, Lico's Tap and Table.
My name is Nick Pirletti, owner of Lico's Tap and Table, speaking on behalf of Cole Alavezos. A-L-A-V-E-Z-O-S.
Thank you.
Okay, the charges honor about December 15, 2018, licensee's employee Cole Alavezos consumed liquor while on duty in the licensed premises in violation of Rule 38478.01B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Gentlemen, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This is a first violation. I recommend a fine of $500.
Mr. Pirletti?
Yes, I just would like to say, we got this violation. We accept the consequences. Cole is a very responsible employee. December 15th was our first night open. We basically closed down, had all the customers out of the bar. Mr. Alavezos was basically closing out his computer, and he had a beer in his hand. The investigators just happened to pop in and saw that. I just wanted to impress on the commission, there was, you know, no drinking while serving customers or flagrant, you know, consumption of alcohol. We still are very sorry. He accepts all consequences, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there. We respect the rules and are very responsible.
Thank you.
Thank you for that representation.
No. Paul, Hannah?
Yes.
Beer for employees.
I would say, I'm impressed that you brought Mr. Alavezos to this, and I appreciate the representations, and I trust we will see you again in this adjudication calendar.
No, no, sir.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $500.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two, the recommended fine of $500 is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three, Mopul Kitchen.
This licensee just received their discovery yesterday and requested continuance for more time to review. I have no objection. They requested to continue to February 6, 2020.
February 6. This violation occurred in 2017. Has there been other continuances? Why would they have just received discovery at this time?
I think we may have just been, we found out about the change in managers recently.
Okay, so it occurred in 2017, but it was only discovered recently?
I believe that's.
Okay. Ms. Neely, please note that we'll want some details on this since it occurred so long ago.
Okay.
Motion to continue Agenda Item Twenty-Three to February 6, 2020.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three is continued to February 6, 2020. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-Four, The Surf Jack.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Terry Lee, Counsel for the licensee. To my right is Lynette Niesman, who is the General Manager for Surf Jack. Waive reading of the charges and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Four, the no contest plea is accepted. I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This is a first violation of noise complaints related to entertainment at the licensee's establishment. I recommend a fine of $500.
Mr. Lee?
Yes, you know, I will defer to the Commissioners' decision, of course. But I would like to make some comments to plead for some leniency. You know, this noise violation occurred back, I think, in 2018. And it was at like 8:30 in the evening. So it wasn't like it was, you know, an ungodly hour or something like that. And but... And the entertainment had actually ended at 8:00. It's just that the investigator showed up at 8:00. You know, how or the circumstances as to how they could know, you know, why the violation occurred prior to that. You know, those facts are unclear, but it's not worth contesting. And since then, you know, Ms. Eastman has modified the music. They've never had a complaint since then, to their knowledge. I don't know whether the commissions received any complaints, but they haven't had any investigators come by. So, you know, I think it was sort of an anomaly, if you will. And given, you know, the time of the evening of each violation occurred and the great record since then, you know, I would seek some leniency on the fine.
Ms. Neely, any comment?
I will note that the investigators investigated that night in response to multiple complaints by the residents there about noise. So apparently every Friday night and then every Sunday morning or afternoon, there was live music. So it was ongoing complaints by these residents. It had happened several times.
This is on Lour Street, correct, in Waikiki?
Yes.
And the Surf Jack is a boutique hotel there?
Yes, ma'am.
That you folks have... It was refurbished some years ago, correct?
Four years ago.
And there was... You folks do a number of charity events, I believe, as well?
Yes, we do, ma'am.
Seeing as this is a first time violation and note that the hour was not late, my motion is to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, a letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please be mindful of your neighbor.
No speakers, none of them.
In the middle of Waikiki? At 8 o'clock at night? Calling agenda item number twenty-five, Thailand Cafe LLC.
This licensee, she was sick during the last hearing. She says she's still sick and she's requested a one-week continuance to January 30th. I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-five, Thailand Cafe LLC for one week.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-five is continued for one week. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, TJ Sports Bar and Grill.
This licensee signed a stipulation to enter a no contest plea and waive appearance.
Motion to accept the no contest plea and waive of appearance.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation of late submission of employee list. I recommend a fine of $250.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $250. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, the recommended fine of $250 is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, The Vault Club.
This licensee also requested a one-week continuance because she needs more time to submit a stipulation to enter a no contest plea to us. I have no objection to continuing this to generate the...
I have one question.
Yes.
This is just your general practice, Ms. Neely. When you enter to negotiations with licensees on these types of complaints or citations, do you advise them what your recommended fine would be?
If... Yes, I... Yeah, and they typically ask. That's one of their...
And understanding we're not bound by the...
I explain that as well. I say it's a recommended fine and ultimately it's the Commissioner's discretion.
Okay, thank you for sharing that process.
Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item twenty-seven for one week. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-seven is continued for one week. Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, The Wine Shop.
May I just reflect Wayne Luke as an attorney for number twenty-eight? The charge is really, you know, that a former owner transferred his license before the commission approval. She was going to come here, but she's working at another job, but I think I can appear before.
Thank you.
We enter a plea of no contest and waive charges and waive the reading of the charges.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-eight, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
So this is a first violation of unapproved transfer of business. I understand that the bill of sale was signed by both parties by June 1st of 2018 and the Liquor Commission was notified March 5th, 2019. I recommend a fine of $500.
Mr. Luke?
Yes, I've presented before you the instructions for when you file a transfer of a liquor license. And you see the circled area down on the page. And it tells you that you have to present certain documents to the commission, you know, contract, et cetera. And what really caught this person is a bill of sale says, "I give to you, that's yours already." But one of the instructions says to file your application that you can file with a bill of sale. So if you use the bill of sale when you file your application, you've already, you know, admitted to a violation.
Catch 22.
What's that?
Like a catch 22.
Yeah, I mean, she is... If she was an attorney, then, you know, an attorney would know better. But, you know, she tried to do the transfer on her own. And, you know, she has a DROA, but she's not a realtor and there's other contracts she could do. She saw a bill of sale and that looked like the easiest thing to do. And that's what she did in order to file her application. That's the only point I'm trying to bring up. You know, it's stated on... That's on the Liquor Commission form with the transfer notice.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. She should have contacted you immediately.
I may have mistaken. I would be in trouble.
Your representation is voted for the record based on your honesty. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $500. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-eight, the recommended fine of $500 is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, Yakiniku Korea House.
This licensee also submitted a stipulation to enter a no contest plea. I will also note that within this document, the stipulation, it says the licensee acknowledges that the Liquor Commission is under no obligation to follow the prosecutor's recommended fine. But yeah.
Motion to accept the no contest plea and waive of appearance. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation. I recommend a fine of $250.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $250. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-nine, the recommended fine of $350 is approved. I'm sorry, excuse me. Trying to make us not get $100. Recommended fine of $250 is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Neely.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Agenda item number thirty, Liquor Administrator. Do we have any administrative matters?
Before you gab a lot, I have something I want to put on the record.
Yes.
It's positive news. So I have an acquaintance who appeared before the administration on a liquor-related matter. It's a pure acquaintance who wanted to be unidentified. But he reported that he received such outstanding service by the front desk staff and there were two people involved. He acquitted it to being a shopper at Nordstrom. And so I wanted to commend the administrator, the assistant administrator, and supervising staff because I believe that the culture of an organization is a reflection of the leadership. And I think you guys have done a great job and we don't hear thanks enough, so thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
So noted. Is there anybody that you would... Is there anybody that we have to single?
I didn't get a name. Tammy, thank you for your leadership in particular. Again, often thankless.
Yes, please let them know.
Very good. Leaving a joke.